It had been our first topic.
It is four o'clock and this workshop is in session. Given the nature of this workshop, we will not be taking public comments. But we'll be going through the presentation on the budget. And then we'll go upstairs for another part of this workshop regarding water issues. So.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is the actual official presentation of the fiscal year 20 proposed budget. And normally, at least in recent history, what we've done is we've, this is the unveiling, so to speak, of the budget that was filed back on July 31st. And then we'll see in the next few slides where we've got several opportunities for the public to comment, for you to deliberate further on the proposed budget. So it's hard to believe that it's been just over a year since the adoption of Curville 2050. And today, dozens of action items have completed, been completed. And so that's building on this momentum for a new fiscal year that also has quite a bit of execution on Curville 2050 in the budget document. You're going to see an effort here in a moment where we're trying to do a better job of aligning our annual budget process and our annual budget with Curville 2050. So this is our calendar outlined in red. This is where we are today, the budget presentation. Also later on, at your record meeting, you'll also have the proposed tax rate that you'll need to take action on, that you're considering it. You won't be adopting it, but you'll be considering it so that you can put the public on notice that, hey, this is the tax rate that we're considering. And then also, you can see where we've got public hearings on the 27th and the 10th, and then adoption scheduled for the 24th prior to beginning the new fiscal year on October 1st. So in the manager's message on page 12 of your book, you can see several items that are included in this fiscal year 20 proposed budget. I won't go over all these because I'll be going over most of these in more detail in later slides, but a pretty significant effort here to try to continue to move that momentum forward on the execution of Curville 2050. This next slide depicts all funds, so a total budget of 78.2 million. That includes everything. Most, the largest funds are general fund and water fund, but there is a lot of capital, which is making that number significant. It might be multi-year spending. And there are also other funds in here that are one-time in nature in terms of their expenditure until they accumulate enough funds to make a purchase, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. So general fund and water fund and capital projects represent 78% of that total. Both water or general fund and water fund are balanced as required, using current year projected revenues to fund current year estimated expenditures. Both these funds are also programmed to end the next fiscal year above the fund balance reserve policy levels that we all have, and both include operating contingencies for unforeseen expenditures. Now looking at general fund in particular, on pages 59 through 62 of your book. As illustrated here, total revenue is 28.8 million in its balance to the expenditures, with property tax and sales tax representing 61% of the total revenue for general fund. Property tax is up 3.9%, and sales tax is up 6% as compared to prior year. Service revenue is the next largest source of general fund revenue at 9.8%. And this is the source of revenue that's primarily, that primarily includes EMS and solid waste charges for services. You are seeing a $200,000 increase in the EMS, and that's as a result of the ambulance supplemental payment program where we get reimbursed by the state for unpaid Medicaid charges. Street use fees are also part of the franchise fees for use and repair of our right-of-way and streets. And that we do include the increase from 3% to 4% of gross water fund revenue as discussed in your second budget workshop for more street maintenance. Now looking more closely at property tax on page 60. We are, or I am proposing a tax rate that is 1.14 cents less than the current year. This will be the second reduction that we've had in three years. If ultimately adopted, the proposed tax rate of 54 cents would mean that the city's not increased the tax rate for 11 straight years. And just for reference, one cent equates to $129,000. The proposed tax rate cut is on the maintenance and operations side, or M and O, while the debt portion of the tax rate is proposed to remain the same at around seven cents. So this slide depicts our certified role, at least summarizes it. While appraised value did increase 9.1%, our taxable value only increased 6.4%. Still a nice increase, but it wasn't the increase that we were looking at previously. And this is after netting out the cap on residential appraisals, as well as exemptions, and also the tax freeze adjustments. So when looking closer at this increase, 71% is on the existing values and the rest is on new values that are being added to the tax roll. And cutting the tax rate to 54 cents, as proposed, reduces the tax bill on the average home by almost $21 a year. This next slide shows you over time what has happened with our taxable value and frozen values. You can see that the over 65 exemption has doubled from 17 million in 2010 to now 34 million in 2019. And at a tax rate of 54 cents, this exemption represents $184,000. General fund, sales tax revenue. While next year's proposed figure represents a 6% increase over the current year budget, it's actually only a 2.9% increase from where we think we are going to end up this year. Plus, we did add a one-time adjustment for the new regional retail Hobby Lobby that's supposed to open before Christmas. So total increase is actually 4.2% with this adjustment. Of significant note, though, the city's sales tax has actually grown 59% in 10 years, so 5.9% on the average over a 10-year period. Still, we continue to work hard to recruit and welcome new regional retail as outlined in Curville 2050 to relieve the pressure on residential taxpayers. And given that we are a regional retail hub, sales tax revenue should be more than just 26% of our total general fund revenue sources. So on the expenditure side now, still general fund, page 70. This is a new slide that we've added, trying, oh, I'm sorry, it'll be the next slide where we look more at Curville 2050. So this slide shows. Can't see. Yeah, this is, this is the slide I was talking about. So this is the Curville 2050 key priority areas, key KPA's as we call them, giving you a little bit of better picture of if these were the priorities that we outlined in terms of the goals or major chapters of Curville 2050, how much are we working on those on an annual basis? And while there's not a real tight connection in terms of actual expenditures, it's fairly reflective. And where I found this helpful is that when you look at certain things like the 0.4% that we're spending on downtown revitalization or housing, you know, is that, should that be a bigger priority and what does that look like? You know, and so just kind of be thinking about that as we move through the budget process. And I know that we've got some work being done with regard to a new housing master plan. So, you know, that will probably generate some things to be looking at, maybe not this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. And then you can also see where drainage is coming in at 1%, which is part of water and drainage, key priority area. So that's, that'll also be changing in terms of going forward if we change the way that we fund our drainage. So then the next slide. Now we're looking at by expenditure category and then also by department. So the largest category of expenses is personnel, which you would, is characteristic of any service industry. And you saw that last year as we were working through the budget process. And the new council members, I know that you've studied the budget as well. Public safety and streets account for 63.3% of the total expenditures. That's up just slightly from last year, so we're spending a little bit more in those categories. And projected unrestricted reserves at the end of 20 are estimated to be at 27.2% just above our reserve policy amount, which is between actually 15 and 25%. So we're above the 25%. Okay, so some significant expenditures that we have included in the general fund. As mentioned previously, we've added more funding for street maintenance, $130,000 to be exact for, from the street use fee with the additional 1% of gross water fund revenue. That line item has now grown to 1.755 million. And then, you know, it wasn't too long ago that it was probably around half a million, so it's grown significantly. We've also included more programming for parks and recreation events for citizens and visitors, which has been a council priority the last couple of years. We've included the increase for the cost of employee insurance that was approved at your recent Employee Benefit Trust Fund meeting, which is still below what we were paying in 24 and 2015, 2014 and 2015. So getting back kind of closer to that level, but fairly constant. Three new positions were proposed, one each in IT or information technology, one in parks and recreation, and one in engineering. I'll talk more about those in a moment. The last two mentioned are actually restoration positions that were previously eliminated or repurposed in a prior budget year. And then for the first time in institutional memory, we are also budgeting new funds to add additional street lighting. So about $25,000 we're putting in there for K Pub to install more street lighting on an area to be determined. There's been talk about City Baker, Holdsworth, just a number of locations. So you all be able to weigh in on that if that's included in the budget. And then finally, in fiscal year 20, I propose that we launch a new neighborhood engagement team made up of existing staff to address neighborhood revitalization. So housing in neighborhoods, big issue in Curville 2050. And so I'd like to dedicate some resources to that in addition to the, just using existing staff and then taking on additional duties to coordinate that. We have programmed some seed dollars to be able to do different things that we find need to be done in different neighborhoods, whether that's, you know, more, more, more street lighting than we have budgeted, or sidewalk, or street painting, or, or just smaller things that might need to be done in a neighborhood. The next slide is now looking at general capital projects fund. This is on page 186 through 198. Lots of detail in there on specific projects, what the funding source is, what the, what the capital outlay is, and where it is, the scope of the project. So a major projects program for fiscal year 20 are the contemplated street and drainage improvements with the sale of certificates of obligation. The remainder of the tennis center improvements, the actual construction of the River Trail extension, which is on your agenda later today toward the bid. And then for the first time, we're also proposing sidewalk funding. So the idea here is that we would begin to fund sidewalks every year in an annual sidewalk program. And that's, that might be used to fix existing sidewalks, or it might be used to fill in gaps where we've got gaps in neighborhoods. It's not a large amount. For next year, it's $50,000. So pretty large city. It won't go cover the whole city, but we'll try to each year do a little more. And in my experience elsewhere, it's, it makes a big impact over even like three to five years. So that's programmed in there. And then as mentioned, the funding for these projects is from certificates of obligation for the street construction, reconstruction, and the drainage improvements, and then also 1.5 million in EIC contributions for the River Trail. We also have 1.75 million in EIC contributions for the tennis center. On the general asset replacement, you can see here the listing. I won't go over all this, but vehicles programmed for fiscal year 20 include piper truck, ambulance, patrol vehicles. These are normal types of replacements. Fleet additions include a grappling truck for parks. This is a new item. Whenever Parks needs grappling truck, Streets is using it because they also are dealing with, you know, streets and trees in the streets and so forth. So this would help us a lot in cleaning up our parks after storms and what have you. Also utilizing a new lease program, which we've talked to you about a little bit in your work sessions, on a pilot or test basis for three Parks trucks. And then with regard to equipment, replacement of a skid loader in Streets and some technology equipment for IT. Not sure where to point this. There we go. So on debt service, this can be found on pages 176 through 178. As you can see from the purple portion of this bar chart, we assume issuance of the 10.5 million of certificates of obligation for Streets and Drainage this fiscal year. This new debt would be issued without an increase to the debt service tax rate. There's probably not a better time really to sell municipal bonds. Amy sent me some data this morning from yesterday. 30-year municipal bonds have slipped beneath the 2% threshold, and 10% or 10-years have, are heading towards a record low. So this would be a really good time for us to come in with some very cheap debt in terms of the interest rate. Also, I'd like to report that we just heard from Standard and Poor and that our double A bond rating has just been affirmed, and they're citing the city's strong financial management, strong financial policies, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, and very strong liquidity. So high marks from Standard and Poor's, which we were certainly hoping for, and that'll help us get better rates on the debt that we do sell. So also, just to recap from one of your recent work sessions on the citizen survey in support of Streets and Drainage. This was a scientific survey where people were randomly sampled and a very high return rate, so that meant that the margin of error was very low. So we had 94% of folks supporting the issuing of debt for Streets and 86% for issuing debt for Drainage. And so that was why we, and this was if there was no tax rate increase to do it. And so that's another reason why I think it's, it's time to move on this. That, and if we chose another path, it would set us back. So on general debt service, just more recap here. Our debt portion of our tax rate remains unchanged at a little over seven cents. It includes the 10.5 million in new COs, approximately 8.5 million for full-depth street reconstruction prioritized by our new pavement plan. And you all will be able to see those streets as we move forward and affirm that, yeah, these are the ones that we need to be doing. And then approximately 2 million for the top two prioritized drainage projects, which would be Take It Easy Drainage Channel and Lowest Street. Our second largest fund, some highlights here, the water fund. The budget here is balanced at 13 million. It includes a change in both the water and sewer rates pursuant to the study that was presented at your last budget workshop. Under the new rate design, we're going to do several things if adopted. We will encourage more water conservation, which is a top priority strategy in our new long-range water supply plan. There'll be no more, or there'll be no or limited impacts to our lowest users, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. We will be able to recover more of our fixed costs and mitigate the volatility of revenue based upon weather conditions. And then as noted earlier, another highlight is that there'll be another $130,000 that Street or Water Fund will pay for street maintenance, wear and tear, street cuts, and so forth that are a result of our water system. So a graph now of revenues for Water Fund. Little simpler on the Water Fund side. Water sales provides 51% of funding, wastewater or sewer, close behind at 42%. The category of other mostly includes the charges that we, we assess for disposal fees where we process septic system waste at our water reclamation plant. Okay, now more on the rates. This is more detail on page 152 through 154 of your book. So as noted, we're now seeking to recover more of our fixed costs while at the same time avoid or limit cost increases to our lowest water and sewer uses. So to do this, we're proposing that we include 1,000 gallons of usage in the base rate. And here's more of an impact of that. With the proposed rate restructuring, there would be an increase of $200, or $2.06 per month for the average usage. So per month, $2.06. But you can see on the right-hand side of your screen that the majority of customers would see even less or none at all because the, the distribution of our customers are at the lower usage rates. And Amy did some math on this, and the over half of our customers would see an increase of only $1.76 or less. So this is our rate comparison to some of our peer cities. You can see that Curville here is still in the middle, very competitive. In addition, it's, it, it needs to be pointed out that these cities all charge impact fees. So when somebody wants to connect to our system, they pay a significant fee ranging, in this case, from $4,000 to $11,000. Well, that becomes a revenue source for the water system, and they're able to moderate their rates, but we don't charge those. And I'm not suggesting that we do. There's all sorts of complications in doing them. And they're usually in higher-growth communities where you've got a lot of churn of those dollars, because if you hold on to them too long, you gotta, you gotta refund them, and it's, it's a lot of accounting and reporting. And so if your growth rate's not significant, they're really not something that I would recommend. Water and sewer expenditures, now looking at page 158. Again, the, mentioning the street use fee, $130,000. We do have an operating contingency of $250,000, and then a restoration of a utility billing position back to, to that operation. On the capital side, lots of improvements here, which are multimillion-dollar improvements, as you're aware, Legion Lift Station, TTHM, and so forth, using very favorable financing programs of the Texas Water Development Board, as well as significant EIC funding in the case of Legion Lift Station. In addition, though, we've programmed flood damage repairs for our water reuse lines using grant-funded assistance, so not a loan, but a grant. A new water well in partnership with Headwaters, which will be on your agenda for consideration later today. And then we'll also be doing some maintenance in terms of repaying some of our tanks. On asset replacement, again, lots of routine items that we're replacing, backhoes, mowers, some lab equipment, and then also using the lease program that I mentioned earlier for trucks, doing one truck in, in this fund, again, on a, on a pilot basis. So this is the picture of our water debt service. And as you know, we sell certificates, certificates of obligation to get our double A rating, but they're really paid for with water funds. Same thing with EIC when they issue debt. So for fiscal year 20, debt service costs are 4.2 million, which is well under our self-imposed cap of 35% of water fund revenue. And with rates inching lower and lower, maybe even to able to bring this down further because we're now looking at a refunding or refinancing of some of this existing debt because rates are, are so low. Okay, now hotel occupancy tax and hot reserve funds. This fund has actually seen a 70% increase since the Great Recession. So you can see a low of 2011, 8.5 million, and now we're, we're, I'm sorry, it was lower than 885,000, now we're up to 1.4 million. So significant increase in this area. So proposed expenditures out of this fund are tourist-related, starting with the annual budget of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but also for group marketing with the Arts Co-op, various events, including the New River Fest, which the city's sponsoring, a lot, a lot with, with love with sponsors as well, and the Arts Festival and so forth, our Playhouse 2000 Management Agreement with the Calis Center, partial funding for an events coordinator for Parks, which was, we had last year, and then some sports tournaments like golf tournaments that we help to support. And then finally, our contribution to the Arcadia Live project will be paid out in the next fiscal year as well from that hot reserve funds. That hot reserve fund goes away, and then now we're just dealing with the hotel occupancy tax fund. Golf fund, as you're well aware from the past several months and the reports that Amy's provided, the golf fund has been negatively impacted by weather conditions. In this chart that you see, in fiscal year 18, we actually provided a significantly larger subsidy to erase their accumulated deficit. For this year and next, though, we've included an ongoing $80,000 subsidy to support the golf operations. But at the same time, we're also going to be reducing some expenditures through a staff restructuring. Also, we're enhancing programming and management support from the Parks Department. We are proposing that we increase fees from anywhere between $1 to $4. And we are also completing a lean six sigma project to improve inventory management over there. Library Memorial Fund, in years past, we've not really highlighted this because there's not been a tremendous amount of activity, but the funds are getting pretty significant over there. And so Laura and her group have proposed, along with her board, some expenditures for next year, so a new makerspace and computer lab, a new outreach vehicle, which we'll also be able to use with that neighborhood engagement team that I talked about earlier, more book purchases, meeting room upgrades, and just plain old building maintenance and also security system with cameras. Still, at the end of all this, there's a very healthy reserve over there in this fund, and it's all funded by donations, either from foundations or from individuals. And, and also the friends of the library. All right, so this is a recap of all the rest of the funds that I haven't mentioned previously. And I did mention previously, though, that many of these have expenditures that have, that are being made from revenues that have built up over several years. Or they don't have hard any expenditures at all, so it's kind of a mixed bag. But the important thing to remember here is these funds, almost all of them are designated fund balances that must be used for specific purposes. So for example, the police forfeiture fund has to be used for police operations and the TERS. You can see here, the levy that's projected is now at $30,051. So that would be the first-year capture. And not, but not programmed for anything because that would then go to the board later on in their, at their annual meeting, which right now would be after the close of the fiscal year. Okay, so this next slide is basically just the next steps. We move on to the official public hearing stage on the tax rate and the budget. And again, there'll be three more opportunities for the public to comment leading up to final adoption. Again, at your regular meeting this evening, you'll be asked to consider Resolution 29-2019 setting forth the ad verum tax rate. This is all about state law and truth in taxation. I think they actually call it something else now, but this is where we have to put the public on notice of what we're considering, which is, which is good. And Amy will have a presentation at your regular meeting about what's going to be published and so forth. So in closing, I want to express a special thanks to Amy and her staff and EA and all the other staff that spent many long hours in putting this proposed budget together. We're very blessed to have such a talented and dedicated professionals on our team. I also want to thank all the council for the time that y'all put in, either one-on-ones with me, asking good questions, lots of good questions. And then also, I think we had some very productive budget workshops, and that, this budget, I think, reflects that because we were able to gauge your interest in different things, get some policy direction on different things, so that hopefully this proposed budget also reflects what you would like to see in the next year. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to take any questions from the council in the time that we have left.
I've got a couple of questions. I've heard it said around here for years, they were upside down on our taxes in regard to businesses paying taxes, but in fact, households, you know, carrying the major part of it. You know where we are there at this point?
I don't have exact figures, but we can certainly get that for you, but it's true. We are, most of our tax base is residential. And it's because we don't have a lot, very really large industrial tax base. And it's because we don't have a lot, very, really large industrial tax base. Now, you know, we have a different kind of economy, it's driven a lot on sales tax and hotel tax. And so we should be doing, that's why I mentioned earlier, we should be doing more on regional retail, not local retail, you know, let the merchants, you know, let the free market take its course. But getting the word out with our retail study about how big our market is, what our net worth per household is, so that people would be, people, meaning companies would be interested in relocating here. In other cities that I have been in where you're a regional hub, sales tax is usually a much larger piece of the, of the revenue pie.
The, well, I mean, it was quoted to me over the years, it's like seventy, thirty, where you get seventy in household and you get thirty in, in the business. But anyway, I, I, I think it'd be good for us to look at that again. One other question I have, oh, the other, the other thing I was gonna say, hopefully if Core Economic Development Corporation is productive, like I think it will be, that will help us in terms of what is attracted here in the way of new businesses and so forth. The other thing I would ask is, in the library info, did I miss marketing, or is that somewhere else?
Marketing in the library itself?
No, no, marketing the library.
Oh, well, beyond what we do already in terms of the programming, the great programming that Laura does, and also our social media, there's not additional funding.
Okay, all right.
Except for Mr. Mayor, we do that outreach vehicle, that will help as well. So that, the idea is that you can, it'll be going to the different neighborhoods to, to bring the library to the neighborhoods.
Okay. Other questions?
The impact fee you were just talking about on that chart, we're, we're in the middle range. Was that impact fee the lower part of those cities and that's why they don't charge as much, or their water rates were lower because they have that subsidy of an impact fee?
They do, they all did, except for Kerr.
That explains why they might not be higher, because they have that additional fee to rely, okay.
That's right.
This is, that's the fee that, that you pay to tie in to the, to the system.
Also pay it.
So on that list, we're the only ones that don't have that impact fee?
That's right.
We're the only ones.
I had a lot of other little questions that could actually be answered another time, but one of them was, I asked Amy on all of the breakdowns for expenses in various departments, I was trying to remember how many employees were, were in each one. So I know there's a page later that shows all of them, but like Parks and Recreation, for instance, has three lines on that chart, so does that mean I add that up?
Yes.
Okay.
They have different divisions, so you add them all up.
And that would be the number?
Yes.
Because when you're looking at the salaries and the benefits and all, it's helpful to know, are we talking about five people or, or twenty?
Right.
I'm reminded again of the, of the cost for that pumper truck. I'm gonna salute that truck every time I see it.
Yes, it's very expensive. I don't think we have one programmed for next year, which is good.
I think it's just great that we've got so much for our streets and drainage, and I just, it's just really nice to know that some of that's going to be taken care of.
Well, what we heard is streets, drainage, housing, top priorities. And then there were other things that we'd like to do, and we, I think our retreat was great in terms of outlining where your priorities were, and hopefully that report that I get out to you about every forty-five days is helpful, showing you kind of what the status is of all that. But we heard you loud and clear, hopefully you, you, you see that, and you also note that we had a drainage study programmed in there, not for a, similar to what we just did to identify what our needs were, but more to study the idea of a drainage tool came up during your discussions on budget for a possible funding source for some drainage So that wouldn't, that would be, the study would be done over the course of this next year. And then you'd be able to deliberate on that during this next year in preparation for next year's budget if you decided to move forward.
You, you made a reference in regard to workforce housing. So if we, we complete the, the plan September, do we have to wait till the following year for that to be funded?
Certain portions, I would say yes, but there, I think there's going to be a lot in there that is not necessarily going to be city funding. So for example, going after federal funding. And just looking at just ways to make it easier to build. We're already doing that with our code. We're adopting a new building code as well here soon. So there's a lot of things that are already in motion, so you, you're not going to have to wait a whole year to begin doing things.
Really exciting, I mean, all the things you just listed, the, and I'm wondering if I could borrow the library's van for a Doyle community tour. It just doesn't have windows, that's another drawback, but the sidewalk, I, I mean, I'm excited about that. We, we have a lot of sidewalks that stop and a lot of vacant land, and then it picks up again later, which keeps people from being able to walk. The interest rate right now, that's a great timing thing, that's exciting. And streetlight, I mean, it's, gosh, it just gets better every time I come to a meeting.
I'm, I'm excited about the new additions as well, and I know they don't have, at this point, they don't have a real big budget impact, but I think they're, you know, the sidewalk, the neighborhood engagement team, the street lighting, I, I, I agree with all of those. I'd be interested to see how plans to develop to make those determinations of where to start and where to go.
Sure. So thanks for bringing that up, because what, what I would envision is, we're wrapping up here the next couple of months, the Doyle Area Development Plan. And so there's going to be lots of needs identified there. For example, that landscape buffer, well, this, this could be a source of that funding that the seed dollars, it's, it's only like twenty thousand dollars. And, and so, but that, that enables us to at least do some things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So the area development plans will help us identify those needs, and my hope is that every year we can do a new area development plan for a different part of the city.
Now, this isn't, this isn't directly related to the, this is from a conversation I had today, but as, to, to go a step further in the, in the funds for the, the neighborhood engagement. When, when that Doyle community plan is, is put together, i- is it going to have a list of priorities and projects with expenses and then we'll determine? Because I have a group that I spoke to today that would be interested in helping with some, you know, improvement, say to Carver Park or something like that, and I said, I hopefully I'll be able to get back to you with a list of projected projects and costs that maybe we could form a partnership with those groups.
Right, right. So to your point, what, what I would envision is that the team is not going to be doing everything themselves, right? It's, it's about engaging the neighborhood. And so we would, we would also organize volunteers to do some of this work and even possibly pay for it. And, you know, whether it's fixing up a house, painting a house, mowing a yard, all sorts of things that we might be able to do in that neighborhood. And there's different approaches that we could take, but what I'm familiar with is like picking a ten-block area, engaging the neighborhood to see what they would like done first, rather than you just assuming what, you know, they need. And then developing a plan and then executing the plan. But the Doyle plan will have some specific things in there, and they'll be prioritized. So their next meeting is going to be, what, September twenty-sixth, I think?
Twenty-sixth.
Where we're going to present the final draft of the plan to the community, and it will have, similar to what we have in the implementation plan in Kerrville twenty-fifty, they'll have a matrix of all the actions that will be, that are being proposed, who's the responsible timeframe, general idea of how much the cost is, so it becomes a menu basically to do some work on.
And I think one of the things that we'll, we're going to find with that is that it's not going to take as much as we think, maybe for some of these areas. I spent some time in Carver Park the other night, and just, I mean, you could do a lot of things with just landscaping, that people could come in, volunteers could come in, get planted. I think, I think, I think we'll be pleasantly surprised with, that, and I think we'll find the, I think we'll find some volunteers to help with those kind of things.
Right, and the other thing that will be happening is, it, it's also a great coordination effort because, so for example, in, in next year, we hope to do some street reconstruction. Well, if some are in that area and their plan says that this is where the priority is, then you can, you can tie the two together and you're not having to, you look at them in a vacuum, right?
But all done at once.
It's all about prioritizing and planning because there's only limited funds, and so how are you gonna get the best bang for your buck?
You know, Rotary is always looking for projects too. I mean, that was one I had mentioned to them.
I think we have a lot of groups that would be willing to, to step in, especially when it's something that's not going to enhance only that portion of town, but it's going to enhance the town. So I think it's a great idea.
We'll say, the best engagement of the neighbors that I ever experienced there was when we had block captains. They worked in getting, getting folks out and so forth, and good experience.
We're gonna try, one of the items that'll be listed will be a Neighborhood Watch Program, which police would, you know, have the block captains. Last year, police department really stepped up their efforts on the National Night Out or, I don't remember what the, the Texas version of that is in the ball, but lots of parties, block parties, and people getting to know one another and looking after each other. So that'll be one of the strategies that we use as well.
Any other word?
It's all good.
Yeah, it's good, it's good.
Sorry about that bond rating. Great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
If you want to reconvene upstairs at what time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, all right. All right, we had a break at four forty-two, be together upstairs.